Good evening. Welcome, everyone, to the City Council Planning, Development, and Environment Committee meeting of October 3, 2023. My name is Councilmember Victoria Hunt, and I am here tonight with Council President Walsh and Council Deputy President Hall. We have one item on our agenda this evening, and before we get to that, we will, at this time, take public comments. So I will check in at this time. I will note for the record, there are no members of the public in the audience this evening. City Clerk, are there anyone? Is there anyone in the virtual meeting? And if so, I will read some additional instructions.
Chair Hunt, we currently have no online attendees.
All right. Then I will note that, at any time, if you would like to give us any comments, please feel free to email us at citycouncil@isicawawa.gov. And with that, we will move past the public comment period to approval of the minutes. We have minutes from the September 6 meeting. Did we have any comments or edits to those? Looks like we do not, so then I'll move to approve those. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. And with that, we will go to our first and only agenda item, which is ID 1403, Conference of Plan Update Drafts Land Use Element. And this will be presented by Kristin Leeson, our Senior Planner. Kristin, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Kristin Leeson, Senior Planner with Community Planning and Development. It's good to see you. Tonight, we are talking about the first draft of the land use element for the 2024 periodic update of the comprehensive plan. And we're just looking for input on our first draft from you all tonight. So there are, whoops, I apologize, there are several questions that we are going to ask of you. One is if there are any additional considerations that you'd like PPC to look at, the Planning Policy Commission to look at. Should staff further expand on language on two of the neighborhood character policies, which we'll get, we'll look at a little closer later on? Should staff consider edits to any of the unchanged policies that are in there? And are there any additional topics that we should consider when making edits to the So just a little background again, the element, the land use element, sets the vision and the intent for the land use in Issaquah. It is closely tied to the transportation element. It guides implementation through the land use code, through the city's strategic plan, the Shoreline Master Program, and then other plans, functional plans that are in place for the city. It is monitored through periodic and annual updates that we do to the land use code, Title 18. It is also going to be monitored now through the newly state mandated report cards that are going to be done every five years. Just as a reminder, some of the things that were required are the land use map that shows city limits, urban growth area, and proposed land use designations. It also is required to include our capacity and our targets. So this is, as a reminder, we'll be adding this as one of the new things this year. Our capacity for both jobs and housing is way over our targets. Our capacity for housing is just over 12,000, and our capacity for jobs is just over 14,000. Yet, our housing target is 3,500, and the jobs target is 7,500. And these are by between the years of 2019 to 2044. Some of the bigger changes that we had were the, our changes to the subarea/neighborhood map. We've added neighborhood plan template policies. We, as I just mentioned, are including our new targets. A state mandated policy is to provide a policy to mitigate risk from wildfires. And we also did a giant reorganization of the element. You may have seen in the draft. I'm going to start with the maps. Our subareas, when we first adopted it back in 1994, were much, 1995, were much, much smaller than this because the city was smaller. So as we have annexed and changed, our boundaries have grown and changed, and we've just sort of added on. They've been in place, the subareas, since 1994. However, in 2017, we had a neighborhood coordinator who was to go out and start networking with the different neighborhoods and said, I need to go out and find out who identifies with what neighborhood. And so this new map was drawn up in 2017. Our two difficulties are, is that, one, as you can see here, the colors are the neighborhood map, the red lines are the subarea map, they do not line up. And another issue is that communications, public works, planning, we all use these maps regularly. And if you don't have lines that line up, it's really been causing a headache for us for the past six years. So we have looked at incorporating the 2017 map into the subarea map. Also, you may recall, there were changes to the central Issaquah boundary in 2018 that were never addressed. So things that were taken out of central have just been floating out there. And then we also annexed in that time that what we call the King County donut, which was also never included or identified as a subarea. But those changes needed to be made. We worked with current planners and the Communications Department to make what is now our proposed map for the city. And this has also been run by Public Works as well, and they provided us with one comment. So you have any, you want me to keep going? Okay. So our proposed policy is, I'm just going to work through those policies that have changed because there are so many in the land use element. I'm also going to note that most, so many in here are that it was simplified, language was removed because it's been codified or because it was redundant. I'm not going to go over those. I'm going to point out those that are a little bit different. So if that's okay with you all. Does that work? Okay. So, one, we did change goal A, which is conserve and protect natural systems from negative impacts of development. We merged it with policy A because they said almost the same thing. We did that. The rest of those on here, A2 through A5, are all simplified or language removed because it was codified. Same here, except for A13, Mountains to Sound has always had an intent or vision statement, and that changed since we last updated this in 2017. So we updated it to make sure it's consistent with Mountains to Sound. We also, there were, there was policy B1 about trees, and some of it had to do with trees in the urban environment, some of it was the tree canopy, so we pulled out some of that, and we're putting it into the environmental element, which has a much longer name, but that's why I'm going to refer to it. And we left the urban tree piece here. C2, where to focus future growth. We've always struggled sort of with rezones and redesignations, so we are trying to point out that we really want our growth to be in the Regional Growth Center, which was not specifically there before. So we updated that policy. The rest, we just simplified. M2 and N3 are the ones that we're going to focus on a little bit later. They have to do with neighborhood character. And those both comply or are implementing the strategic plan, or they, or vice versa, to maintain the existing character, or the character of existing neighborhoods. The one state requirement that we had for the land use element was to mitigate risks to lives and property posed by wildfires. We put the policy in there. How exactly that will be done will be done through our emergencies management. So another one, this was really county-
Can I pause this for one second?
Yes.
So I think we're, several of us are trying to follow along, and I'm just wondering, I'm realizing, the numbers, is it because the lettered numbers moved from different sections, and then eventually, we're going to renumber them? So right now, these are, all of these are kind of in all the different sections.
They're all over the place, but we know that they're going to change a couple of times between even now and by the time it's done. So we've just said, we're just going to have to leave them as much as we can for now.
So in the end, you'll renumber them-
Oh, yes.
-with the new goals. Okay.
Yes.
So, yeah. All right. I think that, I think that makes sense, but we're like, all right, thank you.
On this one, another one that was required by the county is that we address equitable amenities and services in land use. So it talks about services and facilities for all types of residents. Again, focusing future growth in the Regional Growth Center and other mixed-use areas, this actually took it beyond a Regional Growth Center. See, again, support urban core development as a regional growth center. So it emphasizes, again, the work to do in the Regional Growth Center. Explore opportunities, X3 is a new one, explore opportunities to accommodate transit and transit-oriented uses. And this sets us up, we're about to start our work on the light rail planning and the transit stations. So this sets up some direction for us to do that. And our last page here is, it says, Q2, conserve productive forest resource lands. We just took out the hillside viewscape because that's not what this is about, and there are plenty of others that protect the hillside viewscape. And this one was actually about the forested resource lands. And then the last one, support comprehensive annexation of the, of our one remaining potential annexation area. We just broadened it to sort of cover the policies. There's, the state has very, very, very detailed requirements and annexations. We just said, do that comprehensive over. I was wrong. Goal Z, these are our neighborhood template policies that we have in here. Develop, so these are all new, most except for one. Develop neighborhood plans to enhance and establish neighborhood amenities. Adapt guiding principles from Neighborhood Planning Guide, which has not been developed yet, but it will, we have a consultant to do that for us or with us. N3, we actually moved in here. X8, consider 10-minute neighborhoods. And I'll just, the Planning Policy Commission struggled a bit with this one. You may have seen that meeting. They struggled about with that one. X9, celebrate the history and culture of each neighborhood. And X10, maintain and enhance neighborhood aesthetics and unique aspects was also a bit of a struggle. I've edited it since we saw Planning Policy Commission a little bit. They struggled with the word "design" that was in there, but we've taken that out. So then we have all of our, I'm not going to go through them, all of our unchanged policies here, if there's anything specific that you would like to talk about here. On our next steps, we're going to revise this again. In Q4, we'll look, we'll have a second draft. As you know, we'll send it to the state in January for their review. Q1 of 2024, we'll have our final review of all of the elements, and then in Q2, we'll have the public hearing. And it's anticipated it will be adopted in, by around September of 2024. And for you all, your timeline, at our next meeting, at your next meeting, you will have a SEPA scope review, and environment stewardship, and climate resilience element, AKA the environmental element, as I keep calling it. And there we go.
All right. Thank you very much. Do we have any questions? I have a couple. Okay. So the first one, I think every, every time we do this, it's helpful to go over the housing target versus capacity, and how to think about the target, how to think about it in terms of policy, and how we get those numbers.
All right. I was trying to do this, I wouldn't make you dizzy, but I'm just going to lose your heart. There we go. So you want to talk about what each one means?
And specifically, the difference, you know, how do we, how do we think about the fact that our target is very different than the capacity? How you would advise us to think about that as policymakers?
So when we sent, when we did the central, most of our capacity is in central Issaquah, not just the urban core or the region, or the Regional Growth Center. It's, it's all of central Issaquah. And we upzoned it in 2014 so that for future growth targets, we even have a place to accommodate our targets. That was one of the initial reasons that we did it. Two, we wanted light rail to come through here, so we needed more density. So that was another reason to do it. And three, we wanted to protect our hillsides. So we increased the allowable capacity in this area so that we have it for the future. So that's part of the reason why we have so much right now. We way upzoned it back then. Our capacity is just how much can come in there? How much does our zoning by right allow to come in there? How many housing units could we fit under, you know, if we have four and a half dwelling units break, or how many can you actually fit in there? And that's how we figured it out. When we do this, we do take out critical areas, those are removed from the study, and things like city-owned properties, condominiums are taken out, because if you have, you know, 62 condominiums in a building, hard to get 62 people to redevelop their property. So things like that are removed. Our targets are established through negotiations with the county and other cities. The state says, this is how much growth we need, this is how many units we need. County says, or they say counties, this is what we are allocating to you. And then the cities spend six months negotiating how much we're each going to take, and that becomes our target. And our target does not mean that this is how much we have to build, because we're not builders. We also can't make people build here. Our target is how much we have to accommodate. So that's the difference between the two and how we get there.
Council President Walsh?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a follow-up on that. When you're talking about our capacity for building, I know you said a lot of it is in the urban core area and other areas in that area. But does it also consider ADUs and things that were allowed because of 1110, House Bill 1110, or anything like that that would allow for more housing units per parcel?
No, it does not. Ooh. I know. And ADUs are considered units, they're considered. So when we build ADUs, they'll count toward our target.
But our capacity right now does not reflect the fact that previously, a parcel that had a single-family home on it could now have two or more?
Correct.
So our housing capacity is actually higher than that?
Probably higher than that.
Interesting. Okay.
We haven't amended our code, but it will be higher than that, likely, yes.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
And a lot of that is, we set these targets before the most recent state changes had happened, right? I think I remember you guys coming to us for feedback when we were negotiating where these targets get set.
We negotiated in 2021, and I believe they were adopted in 2022.
Okay, thanks.
Early 2022, so yes, before the House bills were adopted.
Okay. On the, on the subareas versus the neighborhood maps, it looks to me like the map that we will be going forward, and so all of the departments, like you were saying, it would all be the neighborhood map plus some areas that, I guess, didn't identify with a particular neighborhood but have, but have neighborhood names on this map. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So those ones, we use the subarea name of that area? Like Tiger Mountain is not labeled on the self-reflection neighborhoods?
Right. And actually, something that we've talked about is removing Tiger Mountain, the south part of Talus, and Lake Simamish State Park, because technically, those aren't neighborhoods, those are preserved areas. So not really, you know, not, can't really go have a community meeting there, which is what communications uses it for. So, and that, not that they come out, the map altogether, they come off the neighborhoods map, but obviously, they'd still be reflected when we show open space and so forth. Not all the names stay the same. Newport changed because Newport was actually different parts, it was parts of different, sorry, subareas. There we go. But yes, most of the names stayed the same.
Okay. And so this would then be the same map that we would use for neighborhood communications and for public works and for community development, so all of the departments would use these same names? And, and sorry, so the one difference in the naming is Issaquah Valley versus?
So between, I'm sorry. Newport changed to Issaquah Valley, which is the, yeah, so Issaquah Valley is the same as the neighborhoods. The Newport name is the same as the neighborhoods. We changed South Cove at the request of the South Cove residents, so it's actually South Lake Simamish now. The rest are the same. Oh, no. Nope. The Tibbetts Creek Valley, actually, is a combination of two different of the neighborhoods. And we added Tibbetts Creek Valley back in as a subarea, it was there before, because just the topography and the way we're going to plan for those areas is similar. It's, there are lots of critical areas there because of the creek that runs through. It's zoned for less density, so as planners, we looked at it and said, for us, if you don't mind, this makes a little more sense.
Okay. And the main reason for these names is that communications work that was done earlier about where people, what people call their neighborhoods, what people, what neighborhood people identify with, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Question?
On that, I notice in the subareas, there was one for Lakeside, and that is now listed as north Issaquah. I wonder whether the lines on that should be adjusted for the top portion of Lakeside that is going to end up being a neighborhood that would probably fit best into Issaquah Highlands?
We struggled with that one. Issaquah Highlands, in the code, has its own design standards. So for that reason, we thought this is easier for residents and planners and developers to recognize as a separate area that falls under these design standards. Now, Lakeside's a development agreement. It's not in the standards, but they also have, they are governed by their development agreement, not through the land use code, have the same area. And we did, we struggled with one, and if we did just Lakeside, my mouth's weird, if we did just Lakeside, then you still have this weird King County area that was annexed with part of central Issaquah. So we've kind of, we've struggled with it, admittedly. So if you guys have any suggestions, I mean, we could, you know, attach this to it, and that could all be part of Lakeside. This is what we came up with as an initial thought. So we are open to suggestions.
Okay. I appreciate that explanation of why it, well, it might fit based on how a future resident there might think of themselves. At the same time, there are important differences to reflect from a city side, so I'll think on that more. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have anything, any other questions? Yeah, go ahead.
I just have a couple of nitpicky questions, so hold on a sec. So I noticed there are five instances where we say, like, best practice, or one instance of best practice, and five that are best management practices for different things. I'm just wondering if, you know, when we, when staff reads that, if we have a good idea of kind of what that means, or do we have any concern about, like, as staff change year over year, would that change in the eyes of our staff? Is it a best practice to just say best practice? My question.
Yes, because those change. So I have a feeling these two are going to have a better than answer than I would, but if it's transportation, I can't even, this is why I'm thinking of, there are transportation policies that were in place that were really, at the time, they were the best practices, best things to do. And then something new comes along, and then something new comes along, and it's, you know, from different agencies or different groups, or it's amended, or things change. So it is typically best just to say best practice, as opposed to referring to one document.
Yeah, I can see that. I guess what I'm thinking of too is, as we continue to add our best practices, it's now different than what maybe the next-door city's best practices is, because maybe they don't know that this other place has thought about it a little bit more and has a new best practice. So I don't really know how to grapple that with, but I think that's an acceptable answer for me, especially because I don't want us to necessarily define it all in here. The, oh, which one was it? The neighborhood, there were a couple under goal Z about pending neighborhood discussion. Can you talk to us a little bit about what that is?
Right here?
Yes.
Okay. And you just want to know more about what that's for?
Yeah, like the reasons for, say, pending neighborhood discussions. So is that actual going out to neighborhoods and having discussions, or is some board and commission going to have a discussion about neighborhoods, or are we going to have a discussion?
It was pending neighborhood discussions with Planning Policy Commission and Planning Development and Environment Committee and Council. How these were going to go, they just, they weren't, and that was our reasoning for putting them in there. We want to do general, you know, neighborhood plans and what, the guideline for us, we want consistency when we go out and talk to neighborhoods about what we're going to talk to them about, what we want to plan for. And so we put these in here, and just wanted to make sure that this was something that you all agreed with.
All right. Some of the ones that weren't changed that had to do with schools, I'm just curious if, like, in years past, as those were developed, were they developed collaboratively with the school district? Are they aware of these policies?
They were.
They were? Okay.
They were, yes.
Thumbs up, then. And then, how does the state, so when we finish everything, it goes to the state for review. What is that process like? Is it, they usually come back with tons of notes, like, here's why we think you're doing wrong, or what should we expect from state review?
Sometimes they do. I can't tell you what happens if you're doing something wrong, because we didn't do it last time I was here. But they do make, they will come back with you and say, these things need to be corrected, and then it has to be reviewed again. And if, you know, once you fixed it. They will also make recommendations for future comp plan updates, something that they do. Yeah. So it's a back and forth.
Stuff for us to keep track of for the next update?
Yes.
That's what you mean? I think that's it for me. I keep going back, I'll probably wait for the comments, but I'm having, having trouble with the way the benefits of 10-minute neighborhoods, so I'll probably want to talk about that with you guys, but I don't have a question about that. Thank you, though.
All right. I have one question that, so goal Z, it says, goal Z, develop neighborhood plans to enhance and establish neighborhood amenities, but I had, I have, I'm looking at goal Z in the draft, the clean draft, and it's completely different, so.
I tried to abbreviate here instead of putting-
Okay. I, I think it, to me, it means something completely different, which is why I'm confused. So this one says, ensure welcoming, attractive, and walkable neighborhoods with various amenities that support the city's cultural and economically diverse community. So that seems different than develop neighborhood plans, but is that? Okay. Okay.
In, on the same section, it talks about a neighborhood plan template policies. Is that also part of that conversation with PPC and PD and?
Right. That's what these are. These are the neighborhood template policies.
So the concept, then, is to have a section in the comprehensive plan, land use element, that has a section on, hey, here's what we think neighborhoods should be, whether that's a future, or here's what all neighborhoods should share, or something like that, whether that's a future neighborhood or an existing neighborhood?
So it's not necessarily us telling them what they should share. It's us covering these issues with the neighborhoods and saying, what are your amenities? Do you want to protect these things? Do you want to allow small-scale residential here? Because we got pushback from Planning Policy Commission on the small-scale retail and the 10-minute neighborhoods. And they said, wait, what if I live in a neighborhood where we don't want it? Okay, but we're not just going to avoid the question with you, we're at least going to ask you if you want it when we meet with you. The history and culture of each neighborhood. Maybe central Issaquah doesn't have a whole lot of history and culture, or maybe, you know, some, something like that, because it's brand-new, it hasn't been developed yet. But other neighborhoods do. They've got, you know, I look, I think of Squawk Mountain, that all has all the mid-modern houses, or the cemetery, and all these, you know, the coal mines and historical things like that that they might want to protect. This is coming out of my head, I'm not talking to the neighborhood, so it's-
Yeah. Okay. So I think there's a conversation to be had about how that reads, because I don't think I read it the same way that you described, so, thanks.
And do we have any other questions? That's it? Okay. All right. Could you please pull up the list of questions that you have for us again? Thank you. All right. So let's go through these questions, and then we can also have general time. Does that sound good? Yes, let's, let's check in. I will note for the record that at this time, we will call for public comment, but there are no members of the public in the audience, and I'll check in with the city clerk if there's anyone online.
Chair Hunt, there are no virtual attendees at this time.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for the reminder. Then we will move into deliberation. So the first question that we have from the administration is, are there any additional considerations that Planning Policy Commission should study prior to finalizing their recommendation to City Council? Anybody? I can start, or, okay, I'll go ahead and start. These are in order that- These are in order, that they appear in the, in the document. So the first one is the natural environment goals. I think the wording was changed, and it no longer, I think, makes sense. So it says, conserve and enhance the city's natural systems from the potentially negative impacts of land development. I think it made sense when it was protect, but now it's saying conserve and enhance from potentially negative impacts. And I like conserve and enhance, so I just, I think the sentence needs to be reworked to something like conserve and enhance the city's natural systems and protect it against negative impacts of development, something like that. I wondered on, throughout, throughout this, there is a lot of protection and respect for topography about hillsides. Firstly, I thought we should also make sure to be protecting other critical areas like, and it does have wildlife corridors, but also the buffers and things like that. And it has wildlife corridors include the streams' buffers, but I think some statement about protecting critical areas in general would be good to have in this section, and would cover a lot of ground. And then the, the word respect did jump out at me. I think we've talked about this before, but in general, for these land use policies, I like to have words that I know as a policymaker, or, you know, trying to look at it through the lens of a staff member, what does it mean? So what does it mean to respect the topography? That's a hard, as a policymaker, that's hard. So I think just the more action kind of oriented, what does it mean? And some of these are great in terms of being, like, I know what action we would take, but some of them, like, respect to that one in particular jumped out as, as a, open to interpretation. Okay. On the land, on the goal Q, which is maintaining uses of, uses and activities of, of the land, natural resources, the first one talks about small agricultural uses, like pea patches. And I wondered if there's a specific legal reason why we are limiting this to the, like, the Creek Valley and the Issaquah Creek area? And the reason is, I do know that there's a lot of pea patches, for example, in the Highlands, and I don't, I don't know that we wouldn't encourage that. They seem to be thriving, so, yeah. Is there a reason that we call out these valleys?
I think when this policy was written, it was probably just where they were located, so it's something that's been overlooked.
Okay, yeah. So I think, you know, might as well encourage them wherever people, neighborhoods want to have them. Under sustainability, this is similar to my concern about the word respect, and maybe this is a conversation, but balance urban development with the protection of the natural environment and environmentally critical areas. Balance seems hard to interpret how one balances, especially as a policy. I don't know if, if any other, if Planning Policy had any conversation about that word, or?
No.
No?
We can rethink it.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I think rethinking it, and it's in the sustainability section, so, you know, through the lens of the sustainability part of our land use, what do we mean with how you would protect the natural environment? Or, yeah, just the, the policy side of what it means to balance those things, I think would be good to clarify. Land use policy X2 is in sustainability. It's about encouraging the development of amenities that are supportive of all types of families. And, and I wondered what the rationale of putting that there is in the sustainability section, and maybe I'm just missing it. But it, it seems like it kind of went more like in the neighborhood section to me, which is in a different part of this.
I don't recall the rationale.
Okay. Okay. So my suggestion there would be to put, you know, things about amenities and services. It seems like the rest of those were in the, it seemed like the rest of those were in the neighborhood part. So just grouping that in there. I thought this, the actions in the Goal G, which are reducing greenhouse gas emissions, are very specific and very actionable, and I appreciated those a lot. I have some specific wording things, but I don't think I need to get into that. And then I think I had a fair amount of, although I think maybe I didn't understand the context of the changes that were made to the section about Goal Z, but I did have a number of comments on that, so maybe we can talk about that separately. And it sounds like Planning Policy already considered that, so I don't know that they need to reconsider that. I think maybe that's something we have to talk about. Okay. I have a question on, under the annexation section. Policy X4, make every effort to ensure that lands within Issaquah's potential annexation area develops according to Issaquah Comprehensive Plan Policies and Development Standards for Annexation. How, how would we make sure that lands that we have not yet annexed develops according to our plans?
We work with the county.
Okay.
And who, they are the reviewers of things before they come into Issaquah, so we work with them.
Okay. I might actually, I might actually then recommend that it, they work with the county to ensure that, because I, yeah, because it's not directly in our control, so then it's unclear how we make every effort. So, but that's a good, that's a good clarification, so thank you. There's another instance of balanced development with protection in land use A2, so again, that would be good to clarify. And then my last one is, under results and accountability, provide recommendations for potential land use amendments when gaps are identified in achieving land use goals and policies. I thought that was an interesting, interesting, but I also thought it would be good to clarify who, this is a document, the comprehensive plan is a document that's used by lots of groups, and staff, staff members, as well as council, and as well as the public. And so I wondered if that one, who, who is responsible for, because this one is also about, there's an interpretation here necessary of if we're achieving the land use goals and policies. But I thought that one, maybe it would be good to clarify who that one is directed to, or is that every, everyone involved should be assessing if we met the goals and policies and providing recommendations if we're not? But I thought that one could also use a little clarity to make it more actionable. And those are some of the things that I thought could be, we could take a second, or could have a second look at. That's President Walsh.
Okay. My notes aren't nearly as organized in order, they're just all the things that I found. One of the areas that was removed was policy H1, which, if I'm going back to that, said, decrease auto-reliance through sustainable land use planning that encourages dense mixed-use development patterns in Central Issaquah and nearby multimodal transportation networks. And I get that that was moved to the new environmental stewardship and climate resilience element, but that really, to me, talks about our land use planning. And I think it also pairs pretty well with the new policy X8 around 10-minute neighborhoods, and also potentially policy O1, well-distributed commercial available via non-motorized travel. And so I wonder if there's a way to continue to bring in that concept, because land use achieves the goals of sustainability through our use of land in an appropriate method, et cetera.
So I can take that one. So for a lot of the transportation policies that were in the land use, or they're focused on a lot of the transportation demand management for transportation, and from House Bill 1181, that's actually required to go into the new environment, which is why it was being supposed to get moved from land use to the new environment element. That's the main reason why a lot of those are getting moved over. We agreed with you that they are kind of a land use base, but because of 1181, we wanted to make sure that we were making it easier for compliance. Now, if you feel like we should have related policies in the land use element, we could take a look at that?
Yeah, I, I think the thing that this policy does for me, when I'm thinking about it in context of land use, is it specifically ties the idea that our land use is related to our auto-reliance, which I think is a really important connection to make, and that we accomplish that via dense mixed-use development patterns and nearby multimodal transportation networks. And so I still think emphasizing those two methods as a way to achieve our goals when we're talking about land use is extremely important. Now, you can do some of that when we're talking about development patterns and 10-minute neighborhoods, if you specify that it was, you know, dense mixed-use or mixed-use horizontal or vertical, something that talks about our auto-reliance, so that, that might be one way to accomplish it, but I still, I feel like there's something there that still needs to be added into one of those few policies, if not bringing this and keeping it in the land use section. Okay, that was one. There's two new policies, X12 and X13, which were related to like, programs and education. I can't see where those belong in land use rather than environment.
I'm looking at those right now. Administering Creekside and Wetland Restoration and the Provide Public Education Programs. Those, let's see, what are, I'm sorry, what are they currently under? Develop, they're under sustainability.
Yeah, they're the last ones in Goal L, under sustainability.
Those were there because it started off as manage city-owned land in a sustainable manner, including, they fell under that policy. So we can, and then we got rid of part of that policy and made two more out of that. That's why it stayed there, but we can move them.
I appreciate it. I'll state that again. Policy M6 and M8, the arterials that's related to neighborhoods. How do, how do we otherwise figure out what an, a neighborhood's traffic situation should be, and whether we would consider an arterial? Like, is there someplace else that's not in the land use element, that we really talk about what the design of streets versus arterials and how they relate to neighborhoods?
We, yeah, we do. We have our, I'm going to probably let Stephen address this one, but we have our street standards that talk, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, so we have the citywide street standards that address roadway design, but it's also tied with the state classification of arterials. And it also dictates how roadway design also incorporates a lot of that, differentiating from the neighborhood roadways, which aren't intended to take the brunt of a lot of the traffic versus our arterial.
Okay. And then the other portion that those policies mentioned was that transportation facilities can create pressure for development in certain areas, especially sensitive areas. So I wonder if there should be a consideration when we're talking about land use, especially land use in an area that maybe hadn't been developed before, and whether the streets that are created in that could create pressures for either further development or development toward areas that are particularly sensitive environmentally? So is, is there something that belongs in that land use section that, that really talks about how transportation can create pressures for more development?
So when, in, when we were considering a lot of these policies, we didn't really think that the transportation facilities were going to create development pressure primarily because the transportation facilities were more of the result of the development pressure that preceded a lot of those transportation facilities. So any of the development that's going to be surrounding any of those streets are already planned for, rather than trying to create new pressures for the neighborhood. Does that help kind of address the point you were getting at? Or do you think that within the land use element, we need to be addressing central pressures from development coming in that's planned for?
I guess I'm thinking of, you know, induced demand created by building transportation, but that's probably more of a regional or, you know, outside of our particular city situation, so there probably aren't that many transportation areas that we could, you know, expand a roadway, one or two, and it would induce demand development within the city of Issaquah. It would probably create more demand in, say, Maple Valley.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, next one. Policy X3, which is related to transit and the transit-oriented development support. I really like that policy, and I like that it's added in there. I guess I would just question whether, if we're thinking about this as a long-term plan, whether it should live inside of Goal P, which talks about the urban core, or whether there's the potential to kind of talk about some of that outside of that urban core area?
I'm going to take a stab at this, but again, because Stephen's more involved in transportation, he probably knows it better. But I, we don't know exactly where it's going to be, and the transit, if you look at Totum Lake, which is going to be a transit center, that is, in Kirkland, that is really expanded outside of what I, you know, was intending. It's, it's huge. And so if that's to come here and say it's closer to Front Street, then what if it starts to touch Front Street? Or, I think, I think the point is, we don't know exactly where it's going to go. And if it's going to potentially touch areas outside of the urban core or outside of Central Issaquah, we'd want to be able to address that, too.
And by it, you mean?
The transit center, the transit-oriented area.
Yeah.
Yeah, which isn't just the transit center, it's the housing that goes with it and the retail that goes with it, and, you know.
Yeah. I guess the, the piece that comes when I'm looking at that, this suggests that we've had a policy conversation that transit and transit-oriented development should be only in the urban core. And I don't think we've really had that policy conversation. And I think, in fact, development, in many ways, is saying, hey, you've got a transit center up in the Highlands and a transit center down near Talis that are, could be, could act in that same way. And so I guess I just, until we have really truly had a conversation about where that should be, and looking at it for a 20-year period or 10-year period, which is what the comp plan does, I hesitate to have that. comp plan does, I hesitate to have that live only in the urban core section. So I think that it would be a good question to bring up to PPC and kind of have that, that conversation so that we can be appropriately forward-thinking on that.
So I think, so this is the wording of the section. So it does talk about, it does talk about some other, maybe it could be softened, but it doesn't only limit to...
So you're saying that you don't think, well, let's see, I have it listed under Goal P.
Yes, it's under Goal P. So Goal P is Focus and Promote Office Housing and Retail Development in the Urban Core, Regional Growth Center, and Other Areas Designated for Compact Mixed-Use Development served by a full range of transportation options. So I think maybe we want to, we could kind of expand on to other areas designated for compact mixed-use development.
Yeah, I think that's a really good call-out. I just didn't, I read it too fast and just considered it urban core. I think that answers my question, so, yeah. You guys already did the work for me. Thanks. Policy O2 is related to pedestrians. Can we change this to something other than inspire? I just, I think that one is really hard to understand as a concept. Inspire a community. Well, I'd like to be actionable. Let's see. I agree with Councilmember Hunt that X2 probably belongs in a different section from sustainability on that. Got other stuff on 10-minute neighborhood. Oh, okay. So Goal M is in, I think that's in the sustainability section. Let me check. Yeah, so one of the things that this calls out, it says, "Allow for and accommodate growth in a manner that is fiscally responsible, responsive to the community, and enhances and protects the natural environment." And this is going to be a little bit of a long rant idea, but fiscally responsible, I think, is a really important thing to call out as a city. When we're trying to decide what the land use should be, one of the things we really need to consider is what the cost to maintain that and provide services to a land use versus the tax revenue that we bring in. And, well, we don't know from our individual city studies, studies have been done on many cities around the country, that dense or downtown areas, smaller units provide more of a tax basis, and larger parcels with only a single-family home on them are often subsidized because their tax revenue doesn't cover the cost to maintain and provide services. So that, while it's in the sustainability section, it actually brought up this concept of do we, should we have a policy or even a goal in the area in the land use element that talks about what the fiscal impact of different types of development are and if we have a preference for types of development that create a net positive rather than a net negative. So I think that's a big enough one that I would want it to go back to PPC and obviously need to hear from my colleagues. So those are my areas.
Great. I have some thoughts on, follow-up thoughts, but do you, do you want to, you haven't gone yet, so...
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any additional considerations for that first one. I liked the word inspire, but I can live with changing it if we want to. I think you bring up a good point, though. I think the intent of what you're saying lives in this goal in my mind, but if you think we need to pull it out or call it out in a new way, willing to have that conversation, I'm curious what our chair, I'll stop there for now.
Okay. I, and I, I feel similarly with respect and inspire. I think those, the words are great, but I just need to know what's the action that we do to, to inspire, like, how? So that's more my goal with my comments on the respect. So I agree. Okay, so on this, allow for and accommodate growth in a manner that is fiscally responsible, responsive to the community, and enhances and protects the natural environment. I think, and this, and then my first one, or my comment in that section was about balance. I think maybe my concerns and your concerns might be addressed if we split this out. Like, that goal covers a lot of ground. It covers fiscal responsibility, responsive to community, and the natural environment. So I think maybe instead of saying you balance all of these things in the first goal, like, maybe we, we tease apart those goals for those different things. Like, we have some goals for what we mean by being fiscally responsible, or policies about what we mean to be fiscally responsible as the goal and what we mean about enhancing and protecting the environment in the context of sustainability. I think that might help, so.
Toward that idea, I think if you tease out each of those three concepts, responsive to the community, I think, would be probably the neighborhood section, and the enhances and protects the natural environment would probably be the natural environment section. But I don't think we have anything. Maybe you could put the fiscal responsibility into the development patterns and create a policy or goal under that that, you know, really talks about what the aim of and uses.
So I think, from my, from my perspective, I think that the, what it means to be fiscally responsible could, could have some goals under that, or some policies, rather, sorry, under that, and that would be helpful. But I do think that the, because it's about allowing for and accommodating growth while protecting the environment. And so when we have the focus of future growth in areas with no minimal or environmentally critical areas, I do think that that is speaking to sustainability. So I think, I think that, for me, it's really just separating out the fiscally responsible piece with policies by what, what do we mean for that? And then the accommodating growth and protecting the environment and policies related to that. I think that would, that would help. I did, while we're in this section, the mitigating wildfire one, which is the last one in this section, I believe, is because the state has required it, but it's also something that our community cares a lot about, and we've had recent discussions with our emergency management team. So to that end, I wondered if we shouldn't also talk about, maybe expand on that or break it into also one, also a policy about evacuation planning and, and sort of emergency planning for other natural disasters. And I'm not sure that that does go into the sustainability section, but I, I did think maybe we could cover some of those other emergency preparedness concerns and, and expands upon it, also for flooding, may note on that one.
All right. Yeah. Do you think that, like, exit, what is the word? Why am I not?
Evacuation.
Yeah, evacuation routes belongs in the land use, or is there another element or chapter of the comp plan?
Well, it's here. In the new environment element, there is going to be a subsection within that that's going to be addressing climate change or resilience. And so it's going to be talking about natural disaster, reaction, emergency management, kind of to the note that the committee members are kind of speaking to tonight. But if you want us to speak more on the evacuation disaster management or land use, could look at adding additional policies around that for this element.
Yeah, because I wonder if that would either belong in the transportation element or in the new climate element versus land use? Because I, I really like this policy. I just don't know if I would go into evacuation in this concept.
Adding on to what Stephen just said, we met with the Sustainability Department today, and they did ask us to put a policy in there around making city facilities climate resilient. So that will be, once we, that was today. So once we figure that one out, that'll go in here as well. But it still, it does not address evacuation, but it does address other natural disasters and has a safe place for those.
Yeah, so I think, I think then this policy, which is a new policy, it would also then help to clarify by, so it says, "Land use planning tools that reduce wildfire risk to residential development in high-risk areas and, and separating the human development from wildfire-prone landscapes." So I think the separating for future development, that's clear what that would be. And then I was thinking that for the existing developments, existing homes, one of the things that would fall under land use would be planning around, like, evacuation routes. So I'm actually not sure what else, what other land use tools we would use for established neighborhoods. And so that might be, if there aren't, then I think explaining what we mean by that would be helpful here. And if there are other tools, then putting that information in here would also be helpful. So like a lot of my comments, really trying to get at what, what are the actions, what are the specific things we could do to achieve that goal?
Great. Council, could you present it, Hall?
Yeah, and I have no problem with changing some of the verbiage that you're feeling is less actionable. I guess in my mind, I'm thinking this lives kind of above the action, and then we have like actionable plans that stem from these, where the action comes from. So, but either way, I'm totally fine with that. I, I did want to express, I don't know if it's maybe a difference of opinion or just something I wanted to highlight, so it sounds like Goal M, the first one under sustainability, definitely is one that PPC should consider. Because I think no matter what we do, it's important that these three elements, the fiscally responsible, responsive to the community, and protects the natural environment, live together somehow. Because, I mean, the balance of those three things is what spells out success. You know, you do some quick analysis, you've got liabilities, and then you've got responsiveness to the community, that's needs or services for the community, and then protects the environment. That's also needs or services for the environment, too, right? So you're kind of weighing pros and cons for these kinds of things. So I just think whatever we do there, it needs to be important that these things are all interrelated and need to be considered, yeah.
So it does sound like, then, that's something we think PPC, it would be good to have PPC take another look at. So Goal, Goal M, potentially teasing it apart, but taking into account that these different pieces also can impact each other. Is that right? Okay, okay. You have any other thoughts on this first one? Anything else that we think PPC should?
I think the Goal Z is definitely an area, but they were already planning to talk about that. Is there, should, is there something that we have as feedback for that, or?
Well, my understanding is actually they, they have talked about it. They have talked about it, where they had their issues were with the preserving neighborhood character. And I just closed all the policies that I have in front of me anymore, but for the preserving neighborhood character and the 10-minute neighborhoods. Those were big discussions that we had. They thought 10-minute neighborhood was a bit specific. And that was one of those conversations, well, what if we don't want it? Well, that's, we just want to have the conversation. And then the other one was the design. The version that was sent to them originally talked about preserving the neighborhood design character. And there was some discussion about just removing the word "design." They felt like it was a bit restrictive. So we changed it to assets and unique, unique assets.
Okay, I think, well, in the version I'm looking at, it has, as the last goal in that section, maintaining and enhance neighborhood aesthetics and unique assets through best practices in design and development regulations. So they were okay with that.
They haven't seen the new version, but they trusted us to bring it to you for discussion.
Okay, so they've had a conversation and they identified some things, but some changes have been made subsequently in this version.
So I hate to throw something back to them that they didn't have a clear answer on. I like the concept of Policy N and Policy X8, which is the allow small-scale retail and personal services in residential area that meets residents' needs, and then also with the benefits of 10-minute neighborhoods, et cetera. I like those as concepts. I think that's something that every neighborhood would benefit from, and the way that I read those policies is that that should be something allowed in every neighborhood. And so if there is a disagreement that that should be the policy because certain neighborhoods might not want that, then we need to figure that out before we put it in the comp plan. Because if I read that and come in, I'm going to say, well, we should probably have codes that allows for small-scale retail in every neighborhood, would be my reaction to reading that policy. I don't know if there's a different interpretation.
I think that was their initial reaction and not understanding that, or me not just explaining well enough that this is a conversation to be had and not a definitive, all neighborhoods will have 10-minute neighborhoods, all neighborhoods will have small scale. It was not a broad stroke, this is the way it will be. It was more, when we go talk to these neighborhoods, this is one of the topics we need to discuss. Do they want this?
Then I might just adjust the policy to say, consider policies neighborhood by neighborhood that would allow.
Okay.
And I think that clarifies, that's not the direction that I necessarily want to go, but I am one of seven and also not on PPC anymore. So I think that's probably a conversation that should be had, because I could see that going two different directions. And then on the 10-minute neighborhoods, I think that's kind of a kitschy term that in, you know, it used to be 15-minute neighborhoods, et cetera. I would prefer defining what the benefits are of that. So when I think of a 10 or 15-minute neighborhood, I think of the fact that there is, there are services such as small-scale retail and personal services, either in mixed-use vertical or horizontal, that are accessible to most neighborhoods within a easy bike or walk. And so that, that, I think, gets to the concept without using terminology that somebody might not know or might have a different conception of.
We were, we have a definition to include in the definition section, which the Planning Policy Commission saw, but you're saying to include it if we can, as much as possible, within the policy itself.
Yeah, I think so, because I'm not sure if the concept, if the public concept of a 10-minute neighborhood is necessarily the same concept everywhere, even if it is defined. I think it just doesn't provide the same clarity as just defining what we're talking about.
Okay, so then, are we comfortable with not, not, would this go back to PPC? It would go back to PPC, but we could either call it out for them to take another look with a specific question, or they could just look at what you've done to address their concerns in your review.
I, yeah, and I, I'll make the changes or make the suggestions and take I, yeah, and I, I'll make the changes or make the suggestions and take it back to them and call it out as something that you all asked them to revisit.
Right. I think we, I think we maybe, do we, do we need, do we feel we need them to specifically revisit this, or just that there will be changes?
I would just highlight it as a change since the last time they saw it. I, I think the sustainability goal M is a focused conversation about, you know, how do we manage all of these concepts? I think the suggestion here is potentially this is responsive to what their needs were. If they see that and feel otherwise, then they can have a conversation.
Okay. I think in that case, I, I liked your wording on neighborhood by neighborhood conversation for N3, which is about allowing retail, and then X8, which is the 10-minute neighborhoods. So I think, I think that makes sense. And also, I, I don't think I would have read it that way as, as written. So it's good clarification, I think. Okay. I had a question that I didn't read earlier. On this, on this section, or is there somewhere else the concept of the green necklace and that as a neighborhood connectivity and amenity type of concept?
It's not referred to in land use, it's all over the parks element, but it's not referred to here.
Okay. I think that's interesting. I mean, it, so for the comprehensive plan, it is comprehensive. It's meant to tie together our different goals and be overarching. And so we do have a goal, for example, about designing and creating trails and paths to increase connectivity. And so I thought there, for example, you know, in, in alignment with the goals of the green necklace. But I thought maybe specifically referring to the green necklace would be, would be a good addition.
So I would like that the transportation line also has a policy calling up the green necklace as connected.
Okay.
I would say, I think the concepts are included here. You mentioned one about trails. There's M11, create connected wildlife corridors. So I, I think there is that if we wanted to say such as the green necklace. I think that would be fine, but I do appreciate that it's used in many other areas.
So back to our list, so we've covered the first one, I think, things for planning policy, which is really focusing on that, the big sustainability goal that we talked about earlier. We've covered, I think, M2 and N3.
Yes, we talked, we talked about N3, not so much about N2.
Right. So M2 is not in the draft, the clean draft?
No.
Okay. Is it supposed to be? Oh, where is it? Oh. Oh. Oh, that was in, okay. Yeah, that was in the block and things in sustainability that I thought should be in the neighborhood character. So, okay. So it's in sustainability. So did you, would, were you thinking it would go into Z, which is the neighborhood one?
Yes. Sorry, I'm rereading it. And I, I have to admit, I thought the same as you earlier today when I was looking at this. So, but yes, looking at it again, yes, it should go in neighborhood.
Okay. So that's our first comment. We agree that we think it should go in the neighborhood section. And can you remind me, is this the one that you mentioned, planning policy was, had a discussion about the word character in M2?
They did. It was, it was really neighborhood, this isn't the same policy. There was another one, we took the word design out, but it was neighborhood character design or neighborhood design care, something like, one of those two. The word design was a little, hit them the wrong way.
I don't like the word character either. I like it better than scale, but I think, you know, if there's a better way to frame it, great. I think the fact that we have already eliminated some other areas and kind of streamlined what that concept is and added other things, to me, makes this less of an emphasis. I can live with it. I like the fact that it talks about providing character, you know, some sort of sense of self to newly developing neighborhoods. I just don't think we should ever say that a neighborhood can't change. I mean, that suggests that there was no history. I mean, I understand we don't live on the East Coast and we aren't around history of, you know, development all of the time, but, yeah. My fear when using the word character or retaining character is that we are saying a neighborhood is set in stone and cannot adapt and change to growing needs and differing people that move in as, as things change.
Okay.
I agree, but that's actually why I love N3. I think N3 is perfect. I don't think that needs to change one bit. Because I think the way that we describe the spirit of what goes into a particular neighborhood really, and then we say enhance neighborhood character, to me, like, that one hits neighborhood character perfectly. But the first one, I, I wrote, N3 spells it out, and this one doesn't. This one just says, or, yeah, retain desired neighborhood character and provide character to newly developing neighborhoods. And I, I didn't get the same kind of, I don't know, I don't have an answer. I don't know how to change this, I'm sorry. But I just felt like N3 in particular made me feel good at the end of it when I read neighborhood character. And then the first one, I didn't feel good reading neighborhood character. And it's because what, a neighborhood character, good neighborhood character, bad, there are a lot of ways the connotation of neighborhood character can be taken. And I think in N3, we nailed it perfectly. But in N2, or in M2, maybe that could be something PPC thinks about too, or maybe it could be something staff thinks about, or perhaps Mayor Hunt has a thought right now about, about M2.
Well, I like, I like the idea of kind of modeling the way we talk about it in N3. And I also was, was also going to suggest that I thought the way that we talk about addressing the, so X11, which is also in the section, it talks about adapting guiding principles maybe, that may be needed to address the unique interests and needs of each neighborhood's residents. I thought that was also kind of a way to address this. So then it would be maintain development regulations that promote compatibility between uses and, you know, address the unique interests and needs of each neighborhood's residents. It also implies getting to know the unique situation of the neighborhoods, which is what the intent was with these. So something like that might be good. Okay. Did staff consider edits to unchanged policies? I think we had several that we mentioned, or several that, yeah, that we mentioned. Do we have any additional ones? Additional topics for staff to consider when making final edits to the draft?
Council President Walsh. Well, technically, this skips question number four from our packet, which said, do the proposed changes fully meet the expectations for the land use element update? And I just had something underneath there about, this is just a really great reworking. And I love the simplification of this. Before, it felt monotonous and like there was a lot there and it was all over the place. Now it's like, oh, this really gives me a sense of where we're going as a city. And so I just, sorry, I wanted to call that out because it was really nice and refreshing. Okay. Are there any additional topics for staff to consider? I think honestly, we have probably pulled it out in that first question. I will just put back my hat of fiscal responsibility and strong towns and all of that. I think addressing that in the land use element is important. And so, well, I did appreciate what Deputy Council President Hall said about, hey, those three balances are important, and keeping that in mind is great. And maybe we do maintain that there, but I think we still need to address the tax and city costs and revenue and all of the implications of land use that never get talked about. Well, we're starting to talk about it now because we've realized that there are some areas that are subsidizing other areas. And I just think if we're going to have a comprehensive plan, we need to think about what our city's fiscal future looks like if we continue a certain development pattern versus others that adapt to that, so.
Great. Okay. Yeah, and I will agree, there were a lot of things that I really liked, like I, I really liked especially the greenhouse gas and energy efficiency section. I was like, okay, great, you know, very clear. And so I, there is a lot to like here. Do you have any, any last on this one or the, doesn't meet expectations?
To, I mean, I'm sure you all dream in comprehensive plan language at this point. So just thank you for bearing with it for quite a bit longer, actually. Sorry.
I have a, a last question. Is the, so the treasures are in, are referenced in the comp plan, I believe? Do you know what section? And it would not be land use?
They're in the land use appendix.
In land use appendix?
In volume two.
Okay. Okay. I think, I don't know if, I don't know exactly where that would fit into this, but I was just looking over, you know, some of these that talk about maintaining the important, you know, the things that are important for cultural, educational, scenic, recreational resources, celebrating local and regional heritage. A lot of those are the treasures, and that's why the treasures list was created. And so I think referencing that would be, would be good. And in appendix, it might not be as easy to, to know. So maybe we could reference it. And, and, and that was in the, that was in goal N. There may be another place that would work better, but that might be a nice addition.
Council President Walsh? I've got one more. Sorry. The, there's the one section that adds the area about the wildland urban interface and fires and all of that. And Councilmember Hunt brought up, while we were kind of talking about that, also flooding. And that made me realize, like, are we talking about one versus the other? Do we have an area that really effectively talks about flooding? Do we need something in a land use section that does? Or does that belong in the climate change and resiliency?
We have several policies that talk about stormwater management in the land use element.
Okay. So it's called out as stormwater rather than flooding. Interesting. Okay. No, that is a good point. Thanks.
Do we have any, anything else? Right. I assume that in the climate resiliency, wildfire is also covered under there. Yeah. Okay. So it will just be in a couple of places in the, in the, yeah. Great, great. Well, thank you again, and this was great to read and also great to hear about the conversations that were, had at our volunteer commission and thank, thank them as well for their hard work on this. And do you have what you need from us on this topic?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Okay, great. We have no other items, so I think the last thing is if there are any announcements. Yes, Sam and Days is coming right up. Encourage the community to go to that. And there being no further business then, we are adjourned at 7:50, 6:00 PM. Thank you.